For June 2, 2016, order, can I get a roll call for members, please?
Dirk Bowden. Emory Dorsey.
I'm here.
Donna Kimzy.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Amanda Weaver and Alan Bucknam are absent.
The next order on the agenda is that pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call for vote. So, re- revote? Okay.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order, or approve the minutes of May 19, 2016?
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 19, 2016.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed, four to zero with two abstaining.
Now's the time for the public forum, for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. There are no...
Nobody.
There's no one in the audience, so we will close the public forum. I'd now like to open up the, uh, there's, there are no items for the public hearing, is that correct?
Correct, just study session tonight.
Just study session tonight.
Yep.
Okay, let's move into other items, commercial, mobile radio service discussion, and self-storage discussion.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Emory made an awesome suggestion, which would have been to be more informal around tables, but we didn't think of that till too late. But keep this informal, we're really hoping just to get your feedback on these issues. We've done a fair amount of work on them already, but as planning commission, your input is certainly valuable to staff and city council, and nothing's approved, nothing's before council at anything at this time, so if it feels like we've already done a lot of work, we have, but we certainly want your input. So first off, let's take a look briefly at our CMRS regulations. CMRS stands for Commercial Mobile Radio Service. So we've had these regulations in place since 1996, as have most communities, it was part of the Telecommunications Act of 1996. We've had some minor updates since that time, but for the most part, this particular section of the code has not been evaluated to any extent. Within the city of Wheat Ridge and as well in most communities, three common types of CMRS facilities are regulated. These include freestanding, which is the image on your left, these generally consist of a tower. We have one here at City Hall, you may remember that lattice structure that's right behind you. We have roof-mounted facilities in the city, and then we also have building-mounted. Building-mounted are often kind of camouflaged, you see in the image on the right there, that's the Highland Towers, they're just these taller panel units that are mounted directly on the face of structures. So the primary motivation for why staff undertook this effort at this time is due to new FCC regulations that were adopted as part of Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, otherwise known as the Spectrum Act. These new regulations went into effect of April of last year. From a compliance standpoint, we're not concerned that we're not compliant with these regulations, but we do want to ensure that our regulations are consistent in moving forward, that it is really evident that we're complying. Essentially, these new regulations require local governments to approve all applications, requesting modifications to an existing facility that does not substantially change the facility. So clearly, and it's our understanding, there's probably some pretty heavy lobby by the cellular community, things like that, but we are required to approve these applications if they fall within guidelines set by the FCC. So the FCC then defines what substantially change means, that would be part of the code, and the application must be approved within 60 days. So we have framework and some timelines and communication requirements between applicants, but this is the primary motivation for this code update at this time. So while we were at it, while we were digging into this section of the code, we wanted to take a look at some other issues, one being our approval, review, and approval process, so I won't go into each one of these, it's all up in your packet, but essentially, the goal of this is to simplify the approval process, to require a more streamlined process, for one, for compliance with the FCC, and two, just because these types of applications are generally pretty technical in nature, it's our opinion that in certain cases, they need to be reviewed by another body, but staff, generally, we're expanding the approval process through the building permit for most facilities, not all. Again, so within that, we're expanding some of our standards in our code. Our code right now doesn't include, because it was, really hasn't been updated to 1996, communities have learned a lot about different types of cell facilities and what works and what doesn't, so we did a lot of research with other communities' codes. One of the main items that we're now including is what we call co-location, which is essentially, if there is a facility, you can see in the image on the left, this is the lattice tower behind City Hall itself, all of those different panel antennas essentially are co-located together, so you could presume that at one point, there was maybe one of those, and over time, more folks have just added and added and added. And in our opinion, you know, this is generally preferable than to new facilities throughout town, so we want to encourage co-location, so we're putting a lot of requirements in the code to encourage, and in sometimes, some cases, require that. Additionally, our code right now, we're just kind of beefing up the fact that people have to comply with federal regulations and requirements, safety standards, things like that, and then we're also speaking to how we handle cell facilities in residential areas, essentially, cannot have a cellular facility, no freestanding towers in any residential area. You could potentially have a building or roof-mounted on a multifamily or in a area that is, or on a building that's not residential use, in those cases, that would require a special use permit. Wrong way. Sorry. Again, so we're looking at our standards, beefing up our standards, one of the reasons to go to building permit is essentially, we would have more development standards for these, so we feel like with more criteria in the code, staff then could have the ability to approve these administratively. So really, we are within the freestanding category in our code, proposing to require that a freestanding facility is an accessory use only, meaning that it can't be the only use on a lot, can't have a vacant lot and then have someone put a cell tower there and have that be the primary use, we're really trying to keep this as a secondary use, and therefore, the accessory setbacks would apply, and that they're not permitted between the principal structure and the street. So those are the additions to the existing portions of the code. Why does it keep going back there? Sorry, guys. Roof-mounted facilities, we have fairly good standards, in our opinion, for roof-mounted facilities, but we are going to add the requirement that they be set back from the edge of the roof. You can see in this image here, that kind of angular structure on the top of that building is actually a cell facility, so there's multiple panels behind that screening up there, so that's just one method by which folks could actually screen cell facilities on a rooftop so that they're really inconspicuous and not obvious what they are. Because screening methods have improved since 1996, and because we would like to encourage co-location, we are proposing to raise the allowed heights for the antennas that could go on rooftops, 12, 12 and 12 there for both the whip and panel antennas, as well as accessory equipment of 12 feet, we're proposing to raise that, just because folks have gotten better at screening technologies and architects understand better how to do this, things like that, and because we're requiring the setback, if you pull those away from the edge of the rooftop, we'd like to give providers little option to provide better customer service to our community through better coverage. And finally, our code contemplates building or structure-mounted, this is actually a church on 38th Avenue, just east of Wadsworth, I believe it's Methodist Church in town, and you can see there that there's panel antennas that have directly been mounted to the tower, and that they are camouflaged quite well. In this picture, they're relatively obvious, but I'm zoomed in, you know, from the street, you kind of have to really look to notice that they're there. Again, we're not adding a lot of new standards related to building-mounted, but just the requirement that they're mounted as flush as possible, not to exceed two feet, so they're not sticking way out there. And one thing that we don't have in our code right now is the requirement to make sure that the top of those panel antennas is lower than the roof edge, so in certain instances, they're sticking above that roof edge, and at that point, become visually obtrusive, so we'd like to require that they not extend over that edge. And then a new category that we're proposing, in certain instances, we call this ground-mounted accessory equipment. In certain instances, we may have a rooftop facility, but they need a generator or some other equipment on the ground located elsewhere, and our standards in that case are a little vague as to how to treat the ground-mounted equipment versus the roof-mounted equipment, so we'd like to have clear standards for any equipment that's mounted separately from either a building or a roof-mounted facility. Essentially, height should not exceed 12 feet, you're applying the accessory use standards. If it's not contained in a building, it needs to be screened in a manner that's attractive and architecturally compatible if it is a building. Likes this slide. That is all I have. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, we'd love your feedback if you feel like there's other standards that you'd like to consider in your experience.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Um, the current standards that you have for screening?
Yeah.
Are they, do you want the new screening at higher? Did you say 12 feet?
So the screening, essentially, our, our language in our code and the language that we're proposing is that the screening would be required if a facility or any equipment is visible from either a residential area or a public street, so, and it would need to screen the equipment entirely, so however, you know...
However, all the equipment is?
Yeah, I mean, you can't screen the entire tower, we recognize that, but we can, you can screen the generator, you can screen any of that electrical equipment down at the bottom, and we're capping the permitted height for that equipment at 12 feet, so essentially, the screen wall potentially would be up to 12 feet.
How many freestanding towers are there?
You know, that's a really good question, that's one thing that we talked a lot about, we don't have a solid inventory of every facility in town, we have an idea of where most of them are, but we haven't actually compiled an inventory. I would guess, there's a, I can think of probably six, but I would be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if there's at least a dozen, I, I'm just guessing though.
So there's no kind of traffic system, so if somebody wanted to put another, uh...
No, that's a really good question, so how do we require, so what we are proposing for a co-location standards is a number of criteria that folks would have, if they want a new facility, then they have to demonstrate, for one, that there is no other facility in the, in kind of a reasonable area that can serve their needs, that if there is, that it's maybe not structurally not, you know, can't cap, it's not capable of handling another facility. We actually go so far as if the owner of that facility says no to a competitor, then we require probably like a third-party mediator to come in and say, "You guys really should try and work on this," so we're doing a lot to try and get them to work together before we would allow new facilities. The standard's pretty high.
Um, I'll go ahead.
You go ahead.
You sure? All right, thank you. So, we're not going to allow in residential zone districts, right, new freestanding towers? I guess, what about mixed-use zone districts?
That's a really good question. Mixed-use zone districts, I believe we will allow them, I don't have exactly where we landed on this in front of me, but we would allow them in mixed-use commercial.
Because here's my, here's my question, right, because, because my home, just north of 38th is residential, but I, I butt to property that's at mixed-use on 38th?
Yeah.
And we don't want to allow it mine, but potentially, you know, right next door, you potentially could, and so there could be, we may have long, narrow, commercial corridors, and I guess I wouldn't be sensitive to residential close to those, those corridors.
I want to say, and again, you'll see the draft as it comes forth, but I want to say that we were not considering those in mixed-use neighborhood, again, and these are just the freestanding facilities.
Sure, right, right.
So they could come in with a rooftop or, you know, a structure-mounted, as is already on 38th, I believe that's where we landed.
Okay. And then do you all have the discretion for, first of all, are you seeing a lot of inquiries?
We see a lot of co-location.
Co-location inquiries?
Yeah, people are upgrading or adding equipment to existing facilities, we're anticipating an application for a new rooftop facility, but it's still got a number of, I believe they're going through environmental testing and things right now, so we've kind of given them preliminary comments, but we don't know if they're actually going to apply.
Do you all have the ability to, in terms of, I guess I'm back to these freestanding ones again, to, to make them more stealth or canister versus traditional raised and things like that?
We do, we talked about that a lot as staff, should we have kind of that separate stealth category or stealth requirement? You may have seen, for those of you who aren't familiar with that term, where folk, where they'll have a cell tower that looks like a tree, or a cell tower that looks like something else. Our code, we left the language, I think, a little more broad, where it just needs to be screened or architecturally compatible, so that if someone wants to come in, it doesn't preclude a stealth facility, but we're not requiring kind of those alternative designs, does that make sense?
That's fair.
Okay.
Thank you.
The applicant that would want a cell tower, do they start with the FCC and then get their approval and come here if they want it in Wheat Ridge, and then they try to select a spot, or how does that work?
You know, that's a really good question, I don't have, I don't understand exactly the entire process, I know that there's a number of hoops I'm sure that they have to jump through, and I don't know, I know we're later in the line, I would imagine, that, rather than earlier, but exactly the order of which approval needs to come when?
The reason for that question is, if they've got approval from the FCC, that then sort of burdens the city...
So are you talking about the...
...in reference to okaying a deal. I mean, in as much as there's only 60 days to do all this.
Gotcha, so, no, with regards to the 60-day requirement, those are really specific conditions that we would have to approve, it can't be a new facility, it can't be outside of the substantial change, which, within that substantial change threshold, if it exceeds the height by 10% or exceeds the width by 10%, so there's a real strict set of criteria by which we have to review that, and so I would imagine at that point, we generally approve those types of changes by building permit, so I'm not really worried about compliance at that point, but we have to approve it.
In as much as the, there can't be anything in R1 or residential neighborhoods, there is nothing else that zoning would be involved with on that, is there, other than, I mean, if it's...
I'm sorry, I'm not in...
...industrial area or whatever, I mean, is...
So one of the things we will do this time around is include these in our use charts so that it is really clear, particularly with respect to the mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial, since this has been updated, we've added some new zone districts, so we are going to update our use chart to make sure that it's really clear that it's an accessory use in the zone districts, you know, essentially, everything except the R and A districts for freestanding.
Anybody else?
The only comment I have is on the, um, the ones that look like trees.
Yeah.
I, I, yeah, I've seen some, they're kind of, they're probably more mist than hit, I was down, I was down Las Vegas...
That's my opinion as well.
And, and there's some pine tree or palm tree type, and they're, they're, they're kind of sculpture and kind of blended in, the pine tree down Las Vegas did not fit in at all.
Right.
And most often, the pine trees, I feel like are just, they just look kind of ailing, they don't, they don't belong there, the ones that, yeah, the ones that I feel like that do the best are the Methodist Church, that they start blending in some of the brick, that really starts to kind of camouflage, and you just, you don't even see it.
Right, I think that's my opinion as well on some of the stealth facilities, particularly with trees in our environment, we don't have a lot of trees, so, you know, if you had just forest cover all through your city, that'd be one thing, but trees are special here, I don't want to copy them with something that doesn't look good.
I will say, the one on the, at City Hall here is the most ugly thing that I've ever seen in my life, I just wanted to make that comment.
Fair enough. Awesome. Any other comments? At this point, we're, we are relatively close to getting a draft, but together, the attorneys reviewed it as far as FCC, things like that, so I would assume sometime this summer, you guys will see the ordinance come forth for the CMRS update regulations. So with that, shall we move on to self-storage? This one, I imagine, at this point, you all may have some opinions about self-storage in Wheat Ridge. Again, this is just a study session, just to fill you in a little bit, you all know, you've reviewed three applications in the, you know, relatively recent history, as such, staff inquired of city council if this is a land use that they were interested in seeing more of, as we did see kind of the surge in applications, and so we asked city council to consider this and talk about it, so we've actually had two study sessions with them, and I'll go into a little bit of that, but they strongly suggested that we bring it to you, as, as we like to do. So just a little bit of background, we have two existing facilities in town, both of them are on the northern edge of town, one on the left there is at near 44th and Ward on the corner there, it was approved in 1983, operates as a public storage, single-story, multi-structures, all exterior alley or access garage, very similar facility on 6161 West 48th Avenue, approved in 1985, operated by the same public storage. Again, these are now through Planning Commission, but you reviewed three applications, we received all these applications in 2015, you considered the Marshall Street self-storage on March 3rd, that was approved as a planned building group, Storall Storage was considered on March 17th and April 7th, ultimately, they had their first public hearing on March 20, or May 23rd, and if you weren't aware, we did receive a legal protest on that application from one of the neighbors, which requires a supermajority vote, so they'll need six of the council members to approve that. The applicants requested a continuance to June 27th, since they did not have a full council on May 23rd, so that one is still yet to be determined, where that one's going to, how that one is going to be decided. And then Parfit Street Storage, ultimately, that was denied by you last meeting on May 19th. So, kind of the questions that city council ultimately was asking themselves and staff was working to help them consider were, what is an appropriate amount of self-storage in Wheat Ridge, and then should improved architectural standards be considered? So there's additional background and additional discussion in your memo regarding safety and operational standards and things like that. Ultimately, we decided, as a staff and city council seems to have concurred, that operational standards don't seem necessary, some communities include things like you can't store certain materials, or you can only out, you know, operate these types of hours, or you have to have a owner or manager onsite at all times, things like that, but with consultation with our police department, we don't really have that many issues with the existing facilities in town, so to try and kind of guess what might be an appropriate operational standard didn't feel necessary for us. What is an appropriate amount of self-storage? That one's a little more challenging to determine, we consulted some industry publications, but without doing a market study, you know, it's really hard to figure out exactly, we can assume based on market that we've received three applications, that the market feels like there's additional need here, but from our perspective, we don't necessarily want to be a regional provider of self-storage, we'd like to provide an adequate amount for Wheat Ridge residents, and, and that's, I think, the preference of city council. And then again, should improved architectural standards be considered? In our opinion, yes, they should have, city council agreed, in some ways, improved standards could kind of self-regulate and self-limit new applications, if we increase those standards, they know that, you know, they're going to have to put more money into their facilities in order to even apply. So ultimately, city council landed on three areas, but they really couched that with, they like those, they're comfortable with those, but they recognize that you guys have a lot of great thoughts, and they really wanted to know if Planning Commission could come up with something better or different, so I think they're really interested to hear your thoughts on these, particularly related to the buffer. So we talked through a number of different options for reducing new facilities in town, one was a buffer, one was remove them from C2, right now they're allowed in both IE and C2, and then improved architectural standards. So ultimately, this map shows, the facilities in red are the approved and existing facilities, facility in blue there on the left side of the screen is the Storall Storage, we don't really know where that one's going to land, and then in the purple, we have our existing industrial or planned industrial zone districts, and really, all of these are concentrated on the north side of the city, but these different shadings show what different radius for buffers could be, so red is a quarter mile, yellow's half mile, green, three-quarters, and blue is a mile. City council landed generally on a half mile, was a distance that they, they think they were comfortable with. Ultimately, the goal on that being to kind of limit the number of possible sites for future applications, recognizing though, that there are some limitations to that, it may be perfectly appropriate in a certain area to have, maybe we want more there rather than using another area, say, up by Ward Road Station or something like that, so I think they recognize the limitations of that. We talked about the possibility of using a special use permit process for every application rather than the buffer. Ultimately, though, special use permit is discretionary, and in some cases, the criteria used to approve a special use permit could actually justify a new facility where one might not be necessary, and same thing with plan development, we talked about maybe requiring them only through a plan development process, and again, same thing, ultimately, the development director and city council, I think, felt like that went a little too far and may ultimately land them in places where we really wouldn't like them. So with a goal of restricting future applications, they were really interested in your thoughts on this buffer, so I'm going to continue, but let's make sure we come back to that and, and talk about that. This one was not, this one was not very controversial, in staff's opinion, is, should not be very impactful, there's only a handful of C2 properties in the city, these are generally smaller parcels, they're along higher visibility corridors, 44th Avenue, Harlan, Ward Road, not in locations that we probably would want to see self-storage, these, just from a land use perspective, we'd probably see, rather see something a little higher value there, as well as the majority of these sites are already developed, so the likelihood of receiving an application just doesn't seem likely, so removing them from C2 is a recommendation of city council. One area, though, that both staff and city council agreed was to require better architectural standards, so one way that we talked through this, as we're starting to see these new types of applications, and you reviewed it with Storall, where we have this multi-story indoor access facility, these buildings are quite large, as you know, and to have to only meet the heavy commercial light industrial architectural standard, it's a little bit of a lower bar, whereas in our opinion, we'd like to maybe set that bar a little higher and go with the retail and commercial standards, particularly as these buildings are larger. They, they generally can be more profitable, they have a higher rent because they're interior, they're indoor, they're safer, they're generally drawing more of a professional clientele than maybe your more traditional units, so in staff's opinion, that probably would self-regulate future applications, and if we get a future application and it complies with our commercial retail standards for architecture, you know, that's, that's clearly an improvement. that's, that's clearly an improvement. And then we also have the other type, which are the exterior access and the light industrial ASDM. So when we were thinking through how to kind of improve the architectural standards for this type of facility, we asked ourselves, you know, is there any other areas in the ASDM that we feel like need updating? And so one of the things, and you may remember in 2012, the ASDM was updated to include the heavy commercial, light industrial standards. Before 2012, we didn't have that set of standards. And when we included it at that time, it's my understanding that they wanted to just kind of see how these worked. And so they only required facades that were within zero to fifty feet of a public street and visible to a public street or a residential property to have to comply with these regulations. Well, we've seen with the Marshall Street self-storage project that they exceeded that fifty feet. Now, they generally complied with the ASDM because we asked them to, but they didn't have to. So what we're proposing in the ASDM is to increase that zero to fifty to one hundred, and then all facades that are visible from a public street. And this would be to any light industrial or heavy commercial application. This is not self-storage specific. But it's something that we felt like we had the ability, that most applicants could comply with this, that it would improve our architectural generally, as well as improve the standards for self-storage. So, let's see, moving on. Oh, a couple other things in the ASDM. ASDM is silent with regards to roof lines, so we've added some other standards. Just generally, as we were looking through the ASDM, since we were kind of digging into it, thought we would make some improvements elsewhere. Again, here are the proposed revisions. They're in your packet. The entire red line draft is in your packet. We have the ability to approve this document administratively, but we really value your opinions and your thoughts. If there are any other suggestions or changes or areas that you'd like us to consider, please let us know. The three areas, though, that we kind of touched again were those roof form requirements, the applicability of the heavy commercial, light industrial standards now going into a property one hundred feet. And then this one was self-storage pretty specific, and it's improved guidelines for overhead roll-up doors. When they are visible to the street, we wanna see additional architectural enhancement. They can't just be, you know, a flat door with no surround detail, things like that. So again, just raising that bar just a little bit for self-storage. So with that, though, I'm gonna take a seat, and we can chat about your comments.
Commissioner Bowden?
So, you know, we didn't read this report.
Yeah. I know. Right. Correct. We get a little use tax, but not a lot, yeah, not a lot of sales tax. Okay.
Commissioner Norrisi?
I'm okay at this point.
Okay.
No questions right now.
Commissioner?
Does anyone else on the commission remember when we had that zoning case on Kipling by Camelot? And they wanted to rezone for mini-storage, and we denied it. That might have been, I might be dating myself.
Was that the one where Discovery Park is now, or no?
There's like that spa there now, or that spa building there, like at Forty-S sixth or something. Does anyone, does anyone, do you vaguely remember that?
Yeah, it had a very, it had some unique access easements, too, that went to the existing house to the west there, residential house.
So.
But they were trying to change, they were trying to change the zoning.
They were gonna do zoning, but they wanted to do it for mini-storage, and we didn't like mini-storage on Kipling and stuff. But I guess, you know, I echo Dirk. I mean, right, so they're cash cows for the developers, and which is why they like them, right? Because you basically do a one-time investment, and you get just ongoing income, minimal, potentially. And, and so that's very attractive to them. But my, my issue is, is that Wheat Ridge is basically landlocked, right? We've grown as much as we're basically going to. We know that industrial land is kind of a premium in the Denver metro area now. And, and I'm concerned about, and I know that every municipality's dealing with it. I know Arvada's dealing with it. I know Lakewood's dealing with it. On the east side of town, we're dealing with it. But these do take up a fair amount of land, and we have limited industrial land. It just, I'd rather, I'd rather be more restricted than less, I guess, as it comes to it.
Okay. I'm curious if you have thoughts on the buffer or thoughts on how to potentially?
I, I think yes to the architecture, because another concern I have, I think there's that one on Shared and on like Twenty-sixth or something in Denver. And the problem is, they just sit there, and there's not an incentive for them to turn over over time like other uses.
Thirty years later.
Right? It's just gonna, we're just gonna get these, and they're just kind of, and my family's used them before, so it's not like I'm inherently against them. They serve a purpose for, for certain things. But I'm looking at that buffer map, I mean, it looks like potentially, you know, there's, there might be room for one or two more in the middle part of the city, kind of, right?
I think council has a particular concern over the Ward Road Station area. You know, I think when you look at the buffer, I think that was kind of the area that kept popping up in their discussion is, and granted, you know, they, they really don't wanna see someone putting one there and kind of tying up that land for the next thirty years.
I mean, maybe there's a way, maybe, I don't know, maybe there's a way to say, hey, you can't have them so far from a transit development, or you can't have it in an urban renewal area or something like that, maybe that would.
Transit development might be an appropriate limitation, though, yeah.
I mean, that would, that might be a, a criteria. I guess for me, fewer is better, whatever that means.
Yeah, because I think that there are potentially areas in town where they might be perfectly fine, you know, where if this, if this ties up land for the next thirty years, it's unlikely that something's gonna come there that's, you know, what we would consider maybe a better land use for the next thirty years. But I think there are areas of town that are zoned where someone could just come in and apply, particularly, like I said, that Ward Road Station area.
Hey, and I was showing a friend from out of state around, and the industrial areas to the north of Denver, up Brighton Boulevard at all, those are high-end residential now.
Now, yeah.
And I agree with Steve, this limits that type of use, which may be behind the sudden interest in Wheat Ridge for locating these types of things. Because North Denver's where they would go before, but now that that's so hot, and I think transit is the key thing.
Okay.
That's the reason they're there, and all this development's taking place on Brighton Boulevard, for example. And I don't, I don't wanna limit it. I, I agree that fewer are better, you know, there's probably a limit. And if we can stop them from painting the doors orange.
You know, we don't, we didn't.
It's a personal problem.
Yeah, we don't go so far in our ASDM to regulate color, and we didn't go there this time either, but I understand that, for sure.
I know, it's a personal problem, but, yeah, fewer rather than more.
Well, we could ban them all together and let Arvada and Lakewood worry about it, you know? Because Arvada has one there on I-70, the service road on the north side, and it's about probably eight blocks west of Wadsworth. And there's a self-storage there. It's a nice, it's been there for years. I mean, I think ever since the interstate was put in. But maybe we oughta just let Arvada and Lakewood worry about it in Denver, and we just ban them all together. I mean, you know, I mean, because the Wheat Ridge resident can go over there to that Arvada, you, you store it place or whatever. Because they, once they're there, it isn't thirty years, it's fifty years. I mean, that's, I'm thinking of one that my sister rented a unit out on East Evans, just, let's say, east of I-25, and there's a self-storage there. And it's the most ugly place, and that was built fifty years ago, and it's still operating. I mean, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's an ugly situation. And once these are planted, there's no reason to remove them, unless the land value just gets so high that it would be, benefit them to, you know, not take their yearly revenue off of the lockers. And, I mean, maybe it'd just be something to ban altogether, that we don't need them, that we don't have to worry about anymore.
Sure. City Council talked about that a little bit. I don't know that they were really interested in going quite that far.
Okay, okay, just, just talking out loud.
But, yeah, no, you know, they certainly had that discussion, you know, is this something we even want anymore of? And I counted on Google at least six between our northern border and Fifty-Eighth Avenue, between Arvada and Jeffco and Adams County, kind of in those, so. And that was just on Google. That was just kind of a quick Google search. So certainly, that northern, you know, kind of I-70, I-76 corridor, Clear Creek has a number of these facilities beyond our border.
Well, I think Dirk's right. I think we probably have fewer residents per storage unit. You know, the square footage is probably more than sufficient for the current population in Wheat Ridge, so.
Commissioner Lee, do you have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, um. Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good idea to look at it, and case by case. But my big, I guess my big interest in this would be, what is the potential for that land for something that is tax generating or would benefit the city more than just having storage units? That would be the thing that I would look at above anything else.
Okay.
I have some questions and comments. So, yeah, I agree with Steve that it looks like there's, looking at the radius along I-70, there's approximately about four that would fit there, so you could put two more in there based on that buffer. I'm assuming that this is irregardless of our neighboring communities, what they have for storage. This is only, Wheat Ridge only.
No, I think we have the ability, the attorney feels like we have the ability to have it be, doesn't matter about the jurisdiction, that if there's a facility on Arvada's side and it's within a half a mile, then that precludes, so.
I do, I do, when I'm thinking about some of the comments about like, whoa, you know, the population now, and maybe we have too many, I'm trying to think about another twenty, thirty years down the road, and so, and also about the type of the storage. It seems like, other than the one that was along Youngfield, some, the majority of them are really just kind of the typical, very, very old seventy-style, typical. And I'm not really so much in favor of those, but when I've driven down Stapleton recently, I see the, the one that you had in the picture, there's a, there's a storage unit, and it, it looks really nice. It's a, I think it's probably a little more of an interior type, but we all know Stapleton is a very high-end residential. And so as I'm thinking about, you know, what is, what is that community? So here we are, we're Wheat Ridge, we're a landlocked city. We have so many areas to build. And I think about Stapleton, is Stapleton these huge, rambling ranch-type houses on large properties? No, definitely not. They're small properties. And so if we're thinking about what do we want, what can we do, we can't, we need to increase the density of the residential units. As we're increasing that residential units, they're gonna need some storage. That's just kind of how it is. And so if, if that's, if that's what we want, we want increased density, then I think we need to keep an open mind about having some storage units. There, there has to be a right proportion, but definitely, I agree with, raise the bar on the architectural standards. Set the bar really high. And so if you, if somebody comes in, they're gonna have to be pretty serious about, about putting that in. And I'm thinking, like I said, twenty, thirty years down the road, and as far, as far as the buffer, I don't know, I, I could see, I could actually see, if I think about Stapleton and I think about high-end communities and dense communities, I could see a self-storage unit by the, the transit station, appropriate to what that is. But I'm not, I'm not thinking about the typical, you know, nineteen seventies, you know, the, yeah, the big, you know, seventeen-foot turning radius. That is not what I'm thinking at all. It is something much, much smaller. But I think we should definitely consider having that specific type. So when we, you know, this isn't a one-size-fits-all. There's different types, different sizes, and trying to think how those appropriately fit in. So the buffer, I think we need to kind of think through that it's just not a one-size-fits-all and just, there's one storage. It needs, you know, I could see one at the, at the TOD.
Some communities I've seen, if they do have maybe a mixed-use district, or they are open to considering storage in a transit area, restrict the storage use on the main floor, so they don't mind if it's storage on the upper floors, but if they want that, to attract that ground floor retail, you know. So maybe, you know, you could do something like Steve's suggestion, you know, the transit limitation, or no storage on the main floor if it is near a transit station.
I think that would be a great idea. I've, I've, I've heard some, yeah, I've heard some stories from some of the mayors of New York, and they talked about how they closed off some streets, and basically they said, the bottom line was that the first floor paid for the entire building because of the retail. So definitely, I think, yes, if we could have retail on the bottom and at least try to, you know, blend that in. I, I've seen some developments, even big box, where you can turn a big box and have inline retail wrapping around that big box structure so that from the street side, it doesn't look like one, a big box storage. It, it looks more in context with what the neighborhood is. And so I, I think we really, that's my opinion, I think we definitely need to raise the bar on the architectural standards. And I think that'll kind of reduce the number of, it'll kind of, the applicants, it'll kind of help that.
Kind of self-limits.
Yeah. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Did you, go ahead.
So just to build on that, maybe, you know, maybe a potential solution is we allow the indoor climate-controlled ones and prohibit the old-school ones, maybe. I'm still, I'm still probably against having it in a TOD area. I just, I disagree with Scott. I just think that, especially for, we, we get one shot and one bite of the apple, and I hate to, you, you need activity and things occurring in a TOD to be successful, and I just, I'm afraid that could squelch it a little bit. So I'm, I'm probably against that. But as it relates to the architecture, I think everyone agrees we need to heighten our architecture. But I would probably go so far, I think you said, you know, on street sides, I'd probably do almost all sides. Because I know in, in the last one we saw, there was that house to the south, and I know that there was issues about that. And then, of course, the one over on Youngfield, they backed to the homes, and it was just, I think that more, more than just the street-facing side, I think, comes into play for, for architecture on this.
Well, especially if they're two-story. Which the inside ones tend to be, all be two-story.
They'll be multiple, they'll be multiple.
Yeah.
The single-story ones with the lines of garage doors, as far as I'm concerned, we can just say no to that.
Yeah, it's just, it's just one machine here.
What's up on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, none of that. We don't need any of that. There's enough already.
Kind of located in bulk, kind of, I would say.
But, yeah, I could, I could do without any banks of roll-up doors like this. This is just.
So how we have the ASDM proposed right now would be that the exterior unit access, kind of the single-story, would, would only have to comply with the heavy commercial, light industrial. Do you feel like it would probably be better even to bump them up to the commercial standards if we are to allow them? Okay, so even that, set that bar higher for both? Yeah?
Because what it, what that might do, too, is that if they know it's permitted in the industrial areas and it has a lesser standard, that's when they look at, well, let's rezone it. But if, if the incentive isn't there, that, they're gonna have to meet the architectural standards, no matter what zoning goes in, well, that'll.
And, yeah, it's actually more related to use than zoning, you know? So anytime it's like the self-storage use comes in, that's where we apply kind of the. It is zoning, too, but it can also be, the use can determine which standards apply. So, but I've noted that generally, you all agree, then, that potentially to have those exterior units jump up to that higher standard and not differentiate them.
And if we get rid of the roll-up door, single-story units.
They take up more room, too.
They do. They do.
They, uh, they're going to take up three, five, four times the amount of space that two, three, four stories, you know, that we can sell. You know, we, 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 just, like you said, let's not have any of these single-story with roll-up doors.
Okay.
Now, to play devil's advocate, what if, what if a developer came and said, okay, this, I want to propose something. I want to do a mixed-use with storage, okay? And it's an area where it's not against a primary street, you know, or a lot of street visibility, but what they propose is they say, okay, we want to have these roll-up doors, but they're all going to face interior, but we want to make it residential, basically townhomes type, so, you know, on the second or, and/or third floor, and you'd have these roll-up storage, I guess, on the bottom. Would that be something, so you'd have some density?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it would have to meet all the criteria, but, but I'm just thinking about, I know there's been some projects I've seen that when you drive into the project on some of these townhomes, it has very similar aisle widths of these storage units. They're small, there's really no, you know what I'm saying, there's no curb and gutter, it's just asphalt, there's no sidewalks. So that, that was just a thought.
I would say we'd probably have to look at that through a plan development, just because, you know, residential's not allowed in IE, and storage isn't allowed in mixed-use. And so I would imagine that that could come in through a plan development, should someone desire to do that. And then we could take a look at everything, all the standards and, you know, what would apply. But that's kind of my short answer, without.
Walmart, as you went down here on 38th and Jawed, but it's just being a perfect. Right in the middle of our town, so.
Thank you.
And that's the problem, too, because you surely don't want these things across from Apple, you know? I mean, you might have the value of land, but you just, it's a, it's a real tough, I don't see self-storage in a 38th avenue anymore.
No.
Just, you know, but it could, it could happen, you know? I mean, a four-story self-storage, like the one up here on Young Field, might fit in if it was done. And I'm sure Denver is working with that in the Highlands area and all, because you've got such dense, I mean, it's becoming so dense as far as living, living spaces. I mean, you're tearing down so many homes and building four, four complexes on the same lot. And so I'm sure those folks who need self-storage, and they're going to have to face that in Denver, too, you know, the four-story, five-story, with elevator access and such.
Right.
Height, you know, I mean, and so those things could be basically hidden.
Yeah, again, council, I think, recognized, you know, in some cases, these are employment-supporting. You know, they're not necessarily employment-generating, but in some cases, they do support our businesses, hospital records, medical records, law offices, things like that. So again, you know, I don't know that they're willing to go so far as to say, we don't want any more of these in town, we just want to make sure that what we see is higher quality and appropriate. So it's a, it's a, it's a challenging conversation, and it's a little bit, we're trying to kind of read through a crystal ball a little bit about who's going to walk in the door next and apply. So, you know, we're just building off of the three applications that we had and trying to anticipate a little bit. What about the standards for the ASDM generally? Any other comments from commission regarding our proposed changes? It's okay, if you don't.
Do we still get inquiries?
For self-storage? Yep. There is one particular site that we have, they keep knocking on our door, and we keep saying, we're not interested, we're not interested. But, yeah, we do still get inquiries.
Is it someone else that needs a zone change?
They would need a zone change to do it, and it's in a residential area, and it's not something that staff supports, so we've, we've told them, not in this spot.
Well, I will say the one on Parfait, Parfett Street or whatever they call it, that just didn't work, period. The lanes, the aisles weren't big enough, it just, it just, the house is in the middle of it. I just, you know, I mean, tear the house down and let's do the thing right. You would have had enough room, but they're, you know, they just, they just wouldn't do anything.
Yeah.
It's a wonder we even got them to agree, if they'd ever do it, to do that drainage situation at the far south end of that property. And I mean, you know, trying to hold them to the fire, to do something there so you could put 52nd Avenue through would be something else. I mean, it's.
Well, you certainly caught their attention on that decision. It's our understanding that they still would like to reapply. They have a waiting period before they can apply again, but they own the property, I believe, so you may be considering that application again someday.
So do we ask for it?
I believe it's a year. Yeah.
Can we get the new standards in place?
We can get the new sta, if you noticed, I had the ASDM dated tomorrow. So unless you all have proposed changes, we are anxious to get them in place, as we feel like they'll improve standards for.
Can you give administrative, council give you that blessing?
Yep. I have it dated tomorrow. Like I said, we're hoping to roll it out. Okay. Well, again, this would require a zoning ordinance amendment to adopt any new regulations restricting self-storage, so you certainly will see this again, I would imagine. I'm not sure on timeline, but sometime in the near future, we'll be bringing forth an amendment, and you'll have the opportunity to provide us additional feedback. And I'll certainly take your feedback back to council and to our director as well.
So do you think around the nation, state, or just the council?
So Marshall's already approved, that one's done and approved, as is, store all storage at this point is an actual application that's underway. They've already opened the public hearing. We're not going to be able to get before them on this topic in order to inform that application, and the applicant, you know, we're, we could technically make him comply, you know, if we up to these standards, but at this point in the game, city council certainly has that discretion to do so, but I don't believe it's something staff will ask them to do.
Okay, are there any other items for discussion?
Just FYI, we are meeting in two weeks. On June 16th, we have two zone change applications, as well as a zoning ordinance amendment from the director regarding marijuana testing facilities, I believe. So hopefully you can make it in two weeks.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
Call for vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your comments and your discussion.